Good evening. It's a little past 5:30 and I'd like to call this special meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson? Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here. Is there anyone who would like to address the Urbana City Council? Okay. Unfinished business, none that we're going to deal with tonight. So, the main reason for calling this was the ordinance number 2016-10-107, an ordinance designating UC2B not-for-profit recommended purchaser for UC2B network assets. And Jim Simon will explain this.
Most of what I have to say is contained in the memo that was sent to you for the Monday, or included in your packet for the Monday meeting, and then the one I sent out, the last email I sent to you with the memo and the proposed ordinance that is being recommended. The not-for-profit continues to negotiate with an entity, but they have formally requested, and I believe today I sent that out to you from their attorney, they have formally requested that both cities designate the not-for-profit as the entity. And Champaign is doing the same. They had their meeting last night and they've authorized their city manager or their mayor, I forget which one, I think the mayor may have more information on that, to execute what needs to be executed. But it probably will be, well, it will be the not-for-profit. And that's what our ordinance that I proposed to you recommends.
So, do you think there's a possibility it could be changed? Because don't I have to approve something today or tomorrow?
You, that's the designation of the UC2B not-for-profit to purchase.
And that's all settled and Champaign already did it?
Yeah, they did it.
Okay. Okay, are there any questions for Jim? Bill?
So, then I understand they'd have till the end of the year to close the deal, is that right?
Yes.
And are there any financial consequences to the not-for-profit if they aren't successful in that?
Yes, the consequences essentially are it relieves countrywide of a number of obligations under their current agreement with the not-for-profit, including meeting the build-out metrics. I believe they're still required to pass 22,000 units. They've got a definition to deal with what's a residential unit and what's a business unit, which is defined in the contract. But I believe that they still have to meet that by 2022. But they are relieved of whatever rights we would have if they don't build out. But it is in their, bottom line, it's in their interest if that's how it goes. It's in their interest to build out because if they don't build out, people can't connect. And if people can't connect, they don't generate any revenue.
I'm not sure if I asked the question right. Or maybe I just don't understand the answer. If the not-for-profit is unsuccessful in finishing the deal and nobody can buy it because they can't raise the financing or something, are there any financial consequences for the not-for-profit? Just any penalties?
Yeah, I can't remember whether the contributions to the benefit fund, Charlie may know that, but Charlie's saying no. The contributions of the benefit fund won't disappear. The contribution to the not-for-profit won't disappear. It's, the other thing that is lost is the city's right to designate a buyer.
All right, okay. Okay, thanks.
It is believed if they can strike an agreement, that it will more clearly mirror the UC2B consortium, the original consortium's goals and principles, and the not-for-profit's goals and principles, which are basically an adoption of the consortium's principles. So, if it can be done, they believe it would be a, you know, better agreement.
Is there a motion? Charlie?
I'll move the ordinance that was emailed to us yesterday, ordinance number 2016-10-107, an ordinance designating UC2B, NFP, recommended purchaser for UC2B network assets.
Second.
Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Marlin. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next, we have ordinance number 2016-10-106, an ordinance fixing the salary of city officers who are elected for a definite term of office. And this is what you voted on-
I'm of approval.
-Monday. And there's one-
Second.
There's one change, and that is that we took out the IMRF for the council members. Okay? All right, there's a motion by Brown, seconded by Marlin. Charlie?
I'd like to move an amendment. In looking at the comparison of the city clerk to the mayor's remuneration, the city clerk gets an additional $5,728 from the township. The result is that there's a $2,000 difference when all is said and done between the mayor and the city clerk. And I think that's insufficient. In addition, if you look at Danville, for example, another city mayor, a mayor council from a government where the mayor is the chief executive, their salary's a little over $70,000 right now for the mayor, and their population of 32,000. Now, my apologies, I didn't go around and get salaries for the rest of the state for comparisons, but it strikes me that our mayor's, mayoral salary should be something similar to Danville and should be a reasonable amount more than the city clerk. And so, I would propose a one-time bump to the existing number for the mayor of $5,000. So, that's my motion.
Okay.
Dennis?
Well, I also thought that the proposal that the council forwarded to this meeting was a little less than appropriate for the mayor's salary, having so many more responsibilities and duties to perform, which I won't enumerate because they're numerous. So, I brought forward a compromise partly between what the mayor originally offered and what the city council was talking about, I guess, on Monday when I was absent.
So, does my motion die for lack of second?
He's talking.
So, yeah, so I'm willing to go with you, Charlie, on that for a one-time bump.
$5,000 or $3,000?
Well, I was thinking $3,000 was a compromise, that you want $5,000, so.
We can start with $5,000. If you'll second $5,000, we can see if it flies. Then we can try deeper.
All right, let's do that. I'll second that.
Okay. Charlie, would you take the chair?
Yes.
Because I'd like to comment.
Mayor.
I've handed out, I've told you about what we saved on health insurance. And that was my policy, that we, once the hospitals weren't going to pay their property taxes, they wanted, Health Alliance wanted to give us a 10.5% increase. So, I said we shouldn't have to pay an increase because we just lost a million dollars in their revenue. We were paying $3 million for health insurance. So, we have a very good insurance broker, and we also have very good staff. Todd Rent worked on this, and I'm sure others as well. So, we ended up getting a zero increase the first year. We got minus three the second year because we had a very good experience. We got a zero increase the third year. And for this year, which was the fourth year, Carl asked for 9%, and then they lowered it to 4%. But we ended up with Blue Cross Blue Shield, which offered us minus 11.5%. So, if you take what we would have been paying if they had gotten what they asked for and we had 10%, which is what the industry has been doing, plus 9% this year, and compare with what we actually got, that's a savings over four years of $3 million. $2 million of that is savings to the city, and $1 million of that is savings to our employees because they pay for their family coverage. The other big savings that I'd like to point out is that in 2008, I had to, I did not reappoint the administrator, and I took on those responsibilities. I did them for a year and a half. And the administrator was being, was, well, actually, he left in 2007, I guess. I don't, I can't remember exactly. But the annual salary was $129,000. And then I hired Mike Munson as chief of staff, and he started working in the end of August. So, the savings that year between the two salaries, I took the administrator's salary and increased it by what the general increase was with, you know, nothing for longevity or anything. So, the cumulative savings over nine years was $675,000, $676,000. So, I think I've done a lot of things to make money available for other people in the city. And I don't expect to get paid as an individual, but I do think that the office deserves to have a higher salary. I'm well aware of the financial constraints. And I used to work in the county, and elected officials would generally get paid more than their staffs. But I am paid less than every one of my professional staff members. So, I think I came up with an original proposal which said that, why don't we just give the elected officials at least a bump up to where they would have been if they got the general across-the-board increase? And you didn't like that. And so, then I went back and I noticed that the clerk got $5,700 more from the township. So, I just think there should be a gap. I don't want to have huge increases. I'm not trying to get paid what other people get paid, like if they're an appointed official. But the mayor of Danville gets paid $73,000, and their city is about 30,000 people. We're about 40,000, over 42,000. So, I think it's reasonable. Either one of these proposals would be fine with me. But I think what was voted on on Monday is a bit too low. So, that's my two cents worth. So, I'll take it back.
Okay.
Okay, so there's a motion by Charlie, seconded by Dennis. Any other discussion? So, your motion is-
Just, mine's amendment to the original motion bumping the mayoral salary up $5,000.
Okay.
And by doing so, it would, if we were to do that, it would, next year's salary would be $70,700. And in four years, it would be $73,700, which would finally catch up with Danville.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Aaron?
First, you said it was a one-time bump.
Yeah, right.
So, how does a one-time bump get us, why are we talking about 20? Are you talking about a one-time bump spread out?
No, 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 one-time bump, just pushing it up and having the starting salaries jump $5,000. So, that new number would be the beginning of the May 2017 term.
Okay, so I have lots of different numbers in front of me.
Right, so it's the last table, the last table that I have proposed.
At the bottom.
At the bottom. So, if you take, if you take the current city ordinance, which is the table above it, which is 65,774 for the mayor.
That's what the current pay is.
That's what, no, that's what-
No, that's what the proposal is.
That's what the proposal is. And if you, if you add a one-time bump of $5,000, you raise the base for the four years by that $5,000. And then you do the $1,000 a year flat rate cumulative.
So, then in essence, your proposal is a $9,000 proposal?
No. It is a, it's $6,000 in the first year, $7,000 in the second year, $8,000 in the third, and $9,000 in the fourth year. Yes, that way. Just like it, like for, currently, it's $1,000 in the first year, $2,000, $3,000, $4,000.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so it's, but it's a one-time bump of the base salary.
And then instead of having percentage increases, the way we've been doing it, Charlie wanted to have just a flat increase every year of $1,000. I had proposed 2%, and he's saying $1,000 instead.
So, the answer to my question is actually yes. Because the total, according to what you just said, is that there's a $5,000 bump for right now, and then $1,000 over the next four years.
Yes.
Five plus four is nine. $9,000, right?
It's a little more.
$3,000.
It's-
Because it's only $1,000.
So, it's $8,000, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, $8,000.
Over four years, yeah.
All right. So, we had a, we voted on a $4,000 increase.
No, there wasn't a $4,000.
We, at the- Yeah, we had approved that at the community, I mean, the committee of the whole. And now, that's being increased by $4,000, basically, in this proposal.
I think that that was, what was voted on was a $1,000 increase-
For four years.
From where I am now. $1,000 the first year, not making any bump, and then $1,000 every year. So, it's a total of $4,000 over four years. But that's less than what an employee would get. Because employees get a percentage increase, and then they also get longevity, and they can get reclassified. And the salary already is below every appointed official, and it's below every one of my staff who's a professional. So, anyway.
So, I'm just trying to, I was just trying to make sure I understood the proposal that's on the table now. And I think I understand that, so I won't belabor that.
Anyone else? Dennis?
Yeah, I think that one can see that making a compromise and choosing the proposal I have, would like to bring forward after this vote on Charlie's proposal makes a lot of sense because it honors the fact that the mayor's job is a significant one and provides benefit to the city. But it's not as extreme as originally proposed by the mayor. But it's not as minor and insignificant as that raise which the city council had proposed. So, I think it's just like the three bearers, this is the pot that's just right. And hopefully, when we have this, if the $5,000 doesn't go, I'm going to make a proposal to do a moderate amount as a salary increase.
Anyone else? Would the clerk please call the roll?
This is on the amendment.
Right. This is on your amendment.
On the amendment, yeah.
Mr. Ammons?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Madigan?
No.
Mr. Roberts?
I'll go with yes on this one.
Ms. Marlin?
No.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion fails.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, you want to amend the current other motion? Okay, Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, so my amendment is middle of the road. And it proposes not a $5,000 raise for the mayor from the original budget that was provided earlier, but a budget that is a $3,000 raise. So, that the 2017 salary for the mayor would be $68,774. The 2018 would be $69,774. The 2019 salary for the mayor would be $70,774. And the 2020 would be $71,774. It's in the middle, and I think it's a good one.
Okay, motion by Roberts, seconded by Smythe. Anyone else? Mr. Brown?
I appreciate all the money that the mayor's saved in the past years. I think it's worth keeping in mind that our code of ordinances and state statute allows for and even encourages the mayor to hire professional administrators in our type of government. And some future mayor, whether it's next year, or five years from now, or nine years from now, may decide to do that again and be a part-time mayor, be able to keep a full-time job. And so, I think the current salary level that was proposed is fine.
Aaron?
So, I just wanted to consider a couple of ideas. So, I don't want to consider them amendments. This is just discussion for now. Because I haven't really looked at Dennis's piece as thoroughly as I would like to. But the point that you said about how much you've saved over the years, I think that's something that we should give some sort of appreciation to, especially looking at the cumulative effect of those savings, right? And so, I think you've done a fine job in that regard. I also think that there should be a noticeable and even significant difference between the work of a full-time mayor and a, and the city clerk because of the duties. So, I don't think that those should be comparable in that, you know, so close together. So, I'm sort of kicking around the idea of a, either a freeze on the city clerk for the next four years and create the gap that we think should be there between the mayor and the city clerk, or a proposed lower amount for the city clerk and allow the $1,000 increase for the mayor. Or even the possibility of the bump that you described, Charlie, at not five, but maybe that $4,000 that we had agreed-
Dennis provided a $3,000 bump. That's what Dennis is proposing.
Right, but then it increases each year, right, after that?
Yeah, that's the same as every, the $1,000 bump is the same one that we use for the clerk and across the board, and 10% of that for the city council members.
And that's because everybody's salary increases each year anyways. Everybody's getting a bump each year that they serve.
Okay.
Charlie?
Yeah, it should be pointed out, we, a couple of years ago, four years ago, we went to this annual increase methodology instead of just setting a salary for each year. Just to sort of try to smooth out the-
I think it was eight years ago.
It was eight years, eight years ago then, sorry. It all runs together after a while. Okay, eight years ago, we decided to start, you know, this sort of a increase on a yearly basis to recognize how we were doing everything else to sort of try to minimize the differences that were occurring and the big jumps that were necessary every four years. And so, that's where this cumulative thing happened. So, instead of a percentage increase, though, this time, and I'd originally proposed $1,300 last week, but it was amended down to $1,000, and then 10% of that for council members was how it was set. So, both the clerk and the mayor get $1,000 in this accumulate, in this flat rate accumulating yearly fashion, but, and council members get 10%. Dennis had proposed a $3,000 bump for the mayor, mayoral position, which would create a $5,000 difference between the mayor and the clerk starting next year.
So, to-
Aaron?
One of the things that Bill just said is really also something that just hit me while I'm sitting here. I didn't think about it from that perspective, that if we're looking at the position of mayor, not the person, then at some point, that position, the person will change that's in the position. And it will be the personal choice of the individual to decide whether or not they work part-time or work full-time, right?
I think that the position was established before I got elected as three-quarters time. And that's what the pay is. But I think it's really a full-time position. But I, so I think you can specify whether it's part-time or full-time. And I know the mayor of Danville is full-time. The mayor of Champaign is part-time. But I think the Urbana mayor has to be full-time.
Is that a state statute?
No, that is, it was Mayor Paley they were full-time before. And I think he's the one that created the administrator position because he was still teaching at the university. So, I think that's how it got started.
So, how do we account for if whoever the next mayor is in, like Bill said, a year, five years, four, whatever it's going to be? How do we, if we change this position to where the mayor ultimately is making $10,000 more than the city clerk, and then that mayor comes in and says, okay, well, I'm not going to work three-quarters of the time. I'm going to work part-time and hire an administrator. We can't decrease that salary then, can we?
You have control over the budget, so if somebody wants to hire an administrator, you can say no. I mean, that would be a big budget increase. And I think you could spell out that you want the mayor to be full-time. And people should be asked when they're running, are they going to be doing it full-time or part-time? That should be a question that's raised in the election. But right now, it's considered to be full-time.
But on our books, it's written in as three-quarters?
No, I think that was sort of an understanding. But I had to do two jobs for a year and a half, and I feel there's enough work that it should be a full-time position. The form of government that we have in Urbana is that the mayor is the chief executive of the city. And that's the same form that Danville has. But Champaign has a city manager form. The city manager is full-time. So, I think, I think it should be a full-time job. And I think that it should be, you know, not highly paid. It's a political job. I think the President of the United States has probably the most, the most, the biggest job in the planet, probably, but he's not the highest-paid person because elected officials generally are not as highly paid.
So-
But the mayor of Urbana is paid less than any county-wide official, so, and less than the mayor of Danville. So, I think some adjustment should be made, and that's all I'm, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, I'm not saying I disagree with you. I'm just trying to understand. Because there seem to be moving parts. Because part of your advocacy here is that if you're doing a full-time position, then you feel like whoever's in the position, not just you, but the position itself ought to pay a certain amount-
Right.
-because of the form of government and because of the amount of work.
Right.
But if the, if, just going forward, if, it sounds like the decision that was made to not hire an administrator anymore will ultimately be a permanent decision. Otherwise, we'd have to make some other sort of cuts or something like that, you know? I don't, I don't know, I'm just trying to-
We don't know what our finances are going to be in the future.
Yeah.
But I did advertise and search for an administrator for a year and a half, and we couldn't find anybody. So, I decided to change the job and have it be chief of staff. And I think Mike Munson is-
And that's where some of the savings came in also.
And that's where, yeah, and that's, and Mike Munson, I think, has done a very good job. And if you want to say, do cities with administrators do better than Urbana? I'd be happy to look at surveys, but I think we've done a very good job here. This is a well-run city, and this council can't control who's going to be, you know, mayor 12 years from now. But I'm just asking for a small change in the salary of the mayor of Urbana. Not for me, but for the, for the position. Diane?
Well, our city code provides for chief administrative officer and has for a number of years. And I think it's up to the person who is in the position of mayor to make a decision whether to not to fill that position and make adjustments accordingly. So, that is a factor in considering the mayor's salary because there's a lot to be said for having a professional administrator running the city. And there's plenty of work to do for a mayor to still be full-time and have a professional administrator running the city. And I think, happen to think it's a very important position. So, that's one of the things that's, I'm factoring into my decision and vote on this.
Charlie?
Yeah, actually, it's, the official title in the ordinance is administrative officer. And it needs to be carefully looked at, and we need to look at the language of it. It really needs to be checked because mayor council from a government, the mayor is the chief executive. That's what you're electing, is the chief executive. And it's real important to establish that power dynamic. And it's very important that the administrative officer understand that the mayor is the chief executive, period, in that ordinance. So, we should probably go back and look at that carefully. We probably should amend it so that it can be administrative officer or chief of staff, something like that. And, and, and give- administrative officer or, or chief of staff, something like that, and, 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 and give, give a future mayor the leeway that, that he or she might need. A question that has come up, um, that I'm wondering about is, what do our, what does our city ordinances and statutes say, uh, is the mayor, is the mayor full-time or part-time in the, in the current city statutes?
I've not looked at it, but in past, going through, you know, ordinances on my way to other things, it does not say that the mayor is full-time or part-time. Uh, the problem with the ordinances as currently drafted is there are periodic references to an administrative officer. Uh, does more than, you know, i- i- it's kind of like a COO, chief operations officer in certain respects, and the person who does that in the city now is the mayor. Uh, the statutes don't provide whether the mayor is full-time or part-time. The mayor did point out the differences between, for example, Champaign and Urbana. They have a full-time city manager who has, by statute, Illinois municipal code, has, uh, pretty broad authority. Our mayor, because we are a mayor aldermanic form, uh, our mayor has the power of mayor as well as, in essence, a city manager.
Anyone else? Okay, so we have a motion, um, Dennis's motion?
Yeah, I'd love to hear a second.
I, I think, Charlie already seconded it, and that was to have, um, a three-thousand-dollar increase?
Right, which would, which would continue as, sequentially.
And then one-thousand-dollar changes every year?
That's right.
Okay.
So I had another question.
Yes, Erin?
So, looking at the past three years, um, there's been a one percent, two percent, and a two percent increase, right?
Right. That was for, um, because four years ago, we were in very bad shape, and I think a lot of us returned part of our salary to the city. Um, so I put zero percent for the first year, one percent, and then two percent for the final years. But the employees got, um, more than that. I had that in my original memo, but I don't have it with me. But, you know, last year, or this year, rather, they got a three percent increase. Okay, okay, thank you very much. The employees, when we got zero, the employees got one and a half percent. The next year, they got one point seven five, then they got two point seven five, and then this year, they got three. So that meant that the elected officials, um, fell further behind, um, you know, in, in the scheme of the whole salary system. And certainly, we're very careful with regular employees, that we try to, we try to match the market and everything, but elected officials is a different thing. But we did, you know, the only thing we have to compare with is what do other mayors get paid, and we have the example of Danville for a similar-type government. Champaign's not really comparable. And then really small towns around here, the mayors are part-time.
Well, so, without the clarity of whether or not the mayor's position is a part-time, three-quarter time, or a full-time position, I think it's hard to compare it to Danville, which we say, what you, uh, have said here tonight is a full-time position.
Well, this is a full-time position. Um, it was just the decision of one mayor who wanted to, uh, work part-time that the administrator was hired. But I don't think any, any law was changed. All they did was hire an administrator. I don't know what they did to the mayor's salary at that point, but there's nothing in our laws that I know of that says whether it's full-time or part-time, but the work is there, so I consider it to be full-time. Charlie?
Yeah, I think, um, we also have to recognize that, uh, we're a far different city than when Mayor Paley was in office, which was in the seventies. So we're, you know, this is forty, fifty years later, and it may have been a part-time job then, and the city is a lot smaller, but we're forty-two thousand people with a staff of two hundred and fifty, more or less. It's a full-time position, whether you have an administrative officer or not, or a chief of staff, you know, it's, the duties as assigned to that other, yes, you're going to have a, you're going to have somebody, uh, either a chief of staff or administrative officer, or some combination and, and, uh, of, of, in a, in a person who's going to be helping you. There's no way around it. If you look at Rahm Emanuel in Chicago, he has a chief of staff, and he's got department heads who have assistants, who help, you know, do all of the, the various management. So it's basically the size. And so, so, you know, the mayor's job is a full-time position. You know, look at the hours that are put in. You know, just look at the hours that you put in as a council member, and, and then multiply that. And so, um, um, it, it should just simply, think of it as a full-time position and, and pay it appropriately.
Okay, Dennis?
Yeah, okay, I'll wait in one more time, too. Um, you know, we've learned that we don't have, necessarily have to have a manager, uh, or a city administrator, um, in the form that we had about eight years ago. As a matter of fact, uh, the city began to run much better without that, uh, without that, uh, um, office, and I think Mayor Pressing has managed the city's finances and, uh, it, you know, done the legal work, uh, to, uh, not only engage, you know, Carl in a very significant lawsuit, uh, for the benefit of the community, has also done a very good job in managing, um, contract negotiations over the past years, has hired legal assistants when necessary in a very wise manner. So I think we have, the current mayor is a man, is a very good manager, and I think, uh, has benefited the community a lot. Now, we're only going to be setting, setting the goals for salary, really, for the next year. In one year, we can, the, the, the standing council, whoever they might be, can again address the budget.
Um, Dennis?
Is that true?
No, we have to set the salaries for elected officials for four years. We do it annually for employees.
For employees, we do.
But, you know, for labor contracts, it's usually like, I think we did it for four years. Some of it was retroactive, so, um, anyway, it, it is not something that we can change next year. We're meeting tonight because we have to do it a hundred and eighty days before we take office, and I, and this year, or next year, May first is on a Monday.
Okay, so I stand corrected on that.
Okay.
So, right, I appreciate that. Whether, whether there's going to be the hiring, or if, if some, if, if the elections, um, if there's a, um, a mayoral decision in a coming year that there needs to be an assistant, uh, managing the office in a different way that it is currently done, we can accommodate that, I'm sure. We're adding right now a community outreach to, uh, person in the personnel of the, um, the city at a sixty-one thousand-plus salary. We're going to consider that, and, uh, we're, we'll be able to, to, um, make that decision without coming to a crisis of consensus. So, um, I can't imagine that we couldn't make further adjustments as required.
Diane?
Can I call the question, please?
Uh, okay. Would the, uh, quit, this is the motion of Dennis's for a three-thousand-dollar increase, the first year, is that correct?
Hmm.
And then a thousand, and a thousand dollars after that for the next three years. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons? Mr. Brown?
Wait a minute, I don't get to vote. I was taking too long?
Yes, you're taking too long.
Oh.
We can come back to you.
Oh, oh, you can come back to me? Okay.
No.
Mr. Madigan is gone, okay? Mr. Roberts?
I'm going to vote yes.
Ms. Marlin?
No.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mr. Ammons?
Wow.
Small deal, kid.
Yes.
That motion carries, so thank you very much.
Ball.
And I believe there's no...
We have a main motion now.
Oh, okay. So then we'll vote on the amended motion. Thank you for correcting me, Charlie. I'm a little rattled here, I guess. Um, would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
No.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Thank you all. Um, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.